Good afternoon, uh, regular section of House Housing Authority Board of Commissioner's meeting. Friday, Wednesday, January, uh, 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22st, 23st, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, 31th, 32th, 33th, 34th, 35th, 36th, 37th, 38th, 39th, 40th, 41th, 42th, 43th, 44th, 45th, 46th, 47th, 48th, 49th, 50th, 51th, 52th, 53th, 54th, 55th, 56th, 57th, 58th, 59th, 60th, 61th, 62th, 63th, 64th, 65th, 66th, 67th, 68th, 69th, 70th, 71th, 72th, 73th, 74th, 75th, 76th, 77th, 78th, 79th, 80th, 81th, 82th, 83th, 84th, 85th, 86th, 87th, 88th, 89th, 90th, 91th, 92th, 93th, 94th, 95th, 96th, 97th, 98th, 99th, 100th, 101th, 102th, 103th, 104th, 105th, 106th, 107th, 108th, 109th, 110th, 111th, 112th, 113th, 114th, 115th, 116th, 117th, 118th, 119th, 119th, 120th, 121th, 122th, 123th, 124th, 125th, 126th, 127th, 128th, 129th, 130th, 131th, 132th, 133th, 134th, 135th, 136th, 137th, 138th, 139th, 140th, 141th, 142th, 143th, 144th, 145th, 146th, 147th, 148th, 149th, 150th, 151th, 152th, 153th, 154th, 155th, 156th, 157th, 158th, 159th, 160th, 161th, 162th, 163th, 164th, 165th, 166th, 167th, 168th, 169th, 170th, 171th, 172th, 173th, 174th, 175th, 176th, 177th, 178th, 179th, 180th, 181th, 182th, 183th, 184th, 185th, 186th, 187th, 188th, 189th, 190th, 191th, 192th, 193th, 194th, 195th, 196th, 197th, 198th, 199th, 200th, 201th, 202th, 203th, 204th, 205th, 206th, 207th, 208th, 209th, 210th, 211th, 212th, 213th, 214th, 215th, 216th, 217th, 218th, 219th, 220th, 221th, 222th, 223th, 224th, 225th, 226th, 227th, 228th, 229th, 230th, 231th, 232th, 233th, 234th, 235th, 236th, 237th, 238th, 239th, 240th, 241th, 242th, 243th, 244th, 245th, 246th, 247th, 248th, 249th, 250th, 251th, 252th, 253th, 254th, 255th, 256th, 257th, 258th, 259th, 260th, 261th, 262th, 263th, 264th, 265th, 266th, 267th, 268th, 269th, 270th, 271th, 272th, 273th, 274th, 275th, 276th, 277th, 278th, 279th, 280th, 281th, 282th, 283th, 284th, 285th, 286th, 287th, 288th, 289th, 290th, 291th, 292th, 293th, 294th, 295th, 296th, 297th, 298th, 299th, 300th, 301th, 302th, 303th, 304th, 305th, 306th, 307th, 308th, 309th, 310th, 311th, 312th, 313th, 314th, 315th, 316th, 317th, 318th, 319th, 320th, 321th, 322th, 323th, 324th, 325th, 326th, 327th, 328th, 329th, 330th, 331th, 332th, 333th, 334th, 335th, 336th, 337th, 338th, 339th, 340th, 341th, 342th, 343th, 344th, 345th, 346th, 347th, 348th, 349th, 350th, 351th, 352th, 353th, 354th, 355th, 356th, 357th, 358th, 359th, 360th, 361th, 362th, 363th, 364th, 365th, 366th, 367th, 368th, 369th, 370th, 371th, 372th, 373th, 374th, 375th, 376th, 377th, 378th, 379th, 380th, 381th, 382th, 383th, 384th, 385th, 386th, 387th, 388th, 389th, 390th, 391th, 392th, 393th, 394th, 395th, 396th, 397th, 398th, 399th, 400th, 401th, 402th, 403th, 404th, 405th, 406th, 407th, 408th, 409th, 410th, 411th, 412th, 413th, 414th, 415th, 416th, 417th, 418th, 419th, 420th, 421th, 422th, 423th, 424th, 425th, 426th, 427th, 428th, 429th, 430th, 431th, 432th, 433th, 434th, 435th, 436th, 437th, 438th, 439th, 440th, 441th, 442th, 443th, 444th, 445th, 446th, 447th, 448th, 449th, 450th, 451th, 452th, 453th, 454th, 455th, 456th, 457th, 458th, 459th, 460th, 461th, 462th, 463th, 464th, 465th, 466th, 467th, 468th, 469th, 470th, 471th, 472th, 473th, 474th, 475th, 476th, 477th, 478th, 479th, 480th, 481th, 482th, 483th, 484th, 485th, 486th, 487th, 488th, 489th, 490th, 491th, 492th, 493th, 494th, 495th, 496th, 497th, 498th, 499th, 500th, 501th, 502th, 503th, 504th, 505th, 506th, 507th, 508th, 509th, 510th, 511th, 512th, 513th, 514th, 515th, 516th, 517th, 518th, 519th, 520th, 521th, 522th, 523th, 524th, 525th, 526th, 527th, 528th, 529th, 530th, 531th, 532th, 533th, 534th, 535th, 536th, 537th, 538th, 539th, 540th, 541th, 542th, 543th, 544th, 545th, 546th, 547th, 548th, 549th, 550th, 551th, 552th, 553th, 554th, 555th, 556th, 557th, 558th, 559th, 560th, 561th, 562th, 563th, 564th, 565th, 566th, 567th, 568th, 569th, 570th, 571th, 572th, 573th, 574th, 575th, 576th, 577th, 578th, 579th, 580th, 581th, 582th, 583th, 584th, 585th, 586th, 587th, 588th, 589th, 590th, 591th, 592th, 593th, 594th, 595th, 596th, 597th, 598th, 599th, 600th, 601th, 602th, 603th, 604th, 605th, 606th, 607th, 608th, 609th, 610th, 611th, 612th, 613th, 614th, 615th, 616th, 617th, 618th, 619th, 620th, 621th, 622th, 623th, 624th, 625th, 626th, 627th, 628th, 629th, 630th, 631th, 632th, 633th, 634th, 635th, 636th, 637th, 638th, 639th, 640th, 641th, 642th, 643th, 644th, 645th, 646th, 647th, 648th, 649th, 650th, 651th, 652th, 653th, 654th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663th, 664th, 665th, 666th, 667th, 668th, 669th, 670th, 671th, 672th, 673th, 674th, 675th, 676th, 677th, 678th, 679th, 680th, 681th, 682th, 683th, 684th, 685th, 686th, 687th, 688th, 689th, 690th, 691th, 692th, 693th, 694th, 695th, 696th, 697th, 698th, 699th, 700th, 701th, 702th, 703th, 704th, 705th, 706th, 707th, 708th, 709th, 710th, 711th, 712th, 713th, 714th, 715th, 716th, 717th, 718th, 719th, 720th, 721th, 722th, 723th, 724th, 725th, 726th, 727th, 728th, 729th, 730th, 731th, 732th, 733th, 734th, 735th, 736th, 737th, 738th, 739th, 740th, 741th, 742th, 743th, 744th, 745th, 746th, 747th, 748th, 749th, 750th, 751th, 752th, 753th, 754th, 755th, 756th, 757th, 758th, 759th, 760th, 761th, 762th, 763th, 764th, 765th, 766th, 767th, 768th, 769th, 770th, 771th, 772th, 773th, 774th, 775th, 776th, 777th, 778th, 779th, 780th, 781th, 782th, 783th, 784th, 785th, 786th, 787th, 788th, 789th, 790th, 791th, 792th, 793th, 794th, 795th, 796th, 797th, 798th, 799th, 800th, 801th, 802th, 803th, 804th, 805th, 806th, 807th, 808th, 809th, 810th, 811th, 812th, 813th, 814th, 815th, 816th, 817th, 818th, 819th, 820th, 821th, 822th, 823th, 824th, 825th, 826th, 827th, 828th, 829th, 830th, 831th, 832th, 833th, 834th, 835th, 836th, 837th, 838th, 839th, 840th, 841th, 842th, 843th, 844th, 845th, 846th, 847th, 848th, 849th, 850th, 851th, 852th, 853th, 854th, 855th, 856th, 857th, 858th, 859th, 860th, 861th, 862th, 863th, 864th, 865th, 866th, 867th, 868th, 869th, 870th, 871th, 872th, 873th, 874th, 875th, 876th, 877th, 878th, 879th, 880th, 881th, 882th, 883th, 884th, 885th, 886th, 887th, 888th, 889th, 890th, 891th, 892th, 893th, 894th, 895th, 896th, 897th, 898th, 899th, 900th, 901th, 902th, 903th, 904th, 905th, 906th, 907th, 908th, 909th, 910th, 911th, 912th, 913th, 914th, 915th, 916th, 917th, 918th, 919th, 920th, 921th, 922th, 923th, 924th, 925th, 926th, 927th, 928th, 929th, 930th, 931th, 932th, 933th, 934th, 935th, 936th, 937th, 938th, 939th, 940th, 941th, 942th, 943th, 944th, 945th, 946th, 947th, 948th, 949th, 950th, 951th, 952th, 953th, 954th, 955th, 956th, 957th, 958th, 959th, 960th, 961th, 962th, 963th, 964th, 965th, 966th, 967th, 968th, 969th, 970th, 971th, 972th, 973th, 974th, 975th, 976th, 977th, 978th, 979th, 980th, 981th, 982th, 983th, 984th, 985th, 986th, 987th, 988th, 989th, 990th, 991th, 992th, 993th, 994th, 995th, 996th, 997th, 998th, 999th, 1000th, 1001th, 1002th, 1003th, 1004th, 1005th, 1006th, 1007th, 1008th, 1009th, 1010th, 1011th, 1012th, 1013th, 1014th, 1015th, 1016th, 1017th, 1018th, 1019th, 1020th, 1021th, 1022th, 1023th, 1024th, 1025th, 1026th, 1027th, 1028th, 1029th, 1030th, 1031th, 1032th, 1033th, 1034th, 1035th, 1036th, 1037th, 1038th, 1039th, 1040th, 1041th, 1042th, 1043th, 1044th, 1045th, 1046th, 1047th, 1048th, 1049th, 1050th, 1051th, 1052th, 1053th, 1054th, 1055th, 1056th, 1057th, 1058th, 1059th, 1060th, 1061th, 1062th, 1063th, 1064th, 1065th, 1066th, 1067th, 1068th, 1069th, 1070th, 1071th, 1072th, 1073th, 1074th, 1075th, 1076th, 1077th, 1078th, 1079th, 1080th, 1081th, 1082th, 1083th, 1084th, 1085th, 1086th, 1087th, 1088th, 1089th, 1090th, 1091th, 1092th, 1093th, 1094th, 1095th, 1096th, 1097th, 1098th, 1099th, 1100th, 1101th, 1102th, 1103th, 1104th, 1105th, 1106th, 1107th, 1108th, 1109th, 1110th, 1111th, 1112th, 1113th, 1114th, 1115th, 1116th, 1117th, 1118th, 1119th, 1120th, 1121th, 1122th, 1123th, 1124th, 1125th, 1126th, 1127th, 1128th, 1129th, 1130th, 1131th, 1132th, 1133th, 1134th, 1135th, 1136th, 1137th, 1138th, 1139th, 1140th, 1141th, 1142th, 1143th, 1144th, 1145th, 1146th, 1147th, 1148th, 1149th, 1150th, 1151th, 1152th, 1153th, 1154th, 1155th, 1156th, 1157th, 1158th, 1159th, 1160th, 1161th, 1162th, 1163th, 1164th, 1165th, 1166th, 1167th, 1168th, 1169th, 1170th, 1171th, 1172th, 1173th, 1174th, 1175th, 1176th, 1177th, 1178th, 1179th, 1180th, 1181th, 1182th, 1183th, 1184th, 1185th, 1186th, 1187th, 1188th, 1189th, 1190th, 1191th, 1192th, 1193th, 1194th, 1195th, 1196th, 1197th, 1198th, 1199th, 1200th, 1201th, 1202th, 1203th, 1204th, 1205th, 1206th, 1207th, 1208th, 1209th, 1210th, 1211th, 1212th, 1213th, 1214th, 1215th, 1216th, 1217th, 1218th, 1219th, 1220th, 1221th, 1222th, 1223th, 1224th, 1225th, 1226th, 1227th, 1228th, 1229th, 1230th, 1231th, 1232th, 1233th, 1234th, 1235th, 1236th, 1237th, 1238th, 1239th, 1240th, 1241th, 1242th, 1243th, 1244th, 1245th, 1246th, 1247th, 1248th, 1249th, 1250th, 1251th, 1252th, 1253th, 1254th, 1255th, 1256th, 1257th, 1258th, 1259th, 1260th, 1261th, 1262th, 1263th, 1264th, 1265th, 1266th, 1267th, 1268th, 1269th, 1270th, 1271th, 1272th, 1273th, 1274th, 1275th, 1276th, 1277th, 1278th, 1279th, 1280th, 1281th, 1282th, 1283th, 1284th, 1285th, 1286th, 1287th, 1288th, 1289th, 1290th, 1291th, 1292th, 1293th, 1294th, 1295th, 1296th, 1297th, 1298th, 1299th, 1300th, 1301th, 1302th, 1303th, 1304th, 1305th, 1306th, 1307th, 1308th, 1309th, 1310th, 1311th, 1312th, 1313th, 1314th, 1315th, 1316th, 1317th, 1318th, 1319th, 1320th, 1321th, 1322th, 1323th, 1324th, 1325th, 1326th, 1327th, 1328th, 1329th, 1330th, 1331th, 1332th, 1333th, 1334th, 1335th, 1336th, 1337th, 1338th, 1339th, 1340th, 1341th, 1342th, 1343th, 1344th, 1345th, 1346th, 1347th, 1348th, 1349th, 1350th, 1351th, 1352th, 1353th, 1354th, 1355th, 1356th, 1357th, 1358th, 1359th, 1360th, 1361th, 1362th, 1363th, 1364th, 1365th, 1366th, 1367th, 1368th, 1369th, 1370th, 1371th, 1372th, 1373th, 1374th, 1375th, 1376th, 1377th, 1378th, 1379th, 1380th, 1381th, 1382th, 1383th, 1384th, 1385th, 1386th, 1387th, 1388th, 1389th, 1390th, 1391th, 1392th, 1393th, 1394th, 1395th, 1396th, 1397th, 1398th, 1399th, 1400th, 1401th, 1402th, 1403th, 1404th, 1405th, 1406th, 1407th, 1408th, 1409th, 1410th, 1411th, 1412th, 1413th, 1414th, 1415th, 1416th, 1417th, 1418th, 1419th, 1420th, 1421th, 1422th, 1423th, 1424th, 1425th, 1426th, 1427th, 1428th, 1429th, 1430th, 1431th, 1432th, 1433th, 1434th, 1435th, 1436th, 1437th, 1438th, 1439th, 1440th, 1441th, 1442th, 1443th, 1444th, 1445th, 1446th, 1447th, 1448th, 1449th, 1450th, 1451th, 1452th, 1453th, 1454th, 1455th, 1456th, 1457th, 1458th, 1459th, 1460th, 1461th, 1462th, 1463th, 1464th, 1465th, 1466th, 1467th, 1468th, 1469th, 1470th, 1471th, 1472th, 1473th, 1474th, 1475th, 1476th, 1477th, 1478th, 1479th, 1480th, 1481th, 1482th, 1483th, 1484th, 1485th, 1486th, 1487th, 1488th, 1489th, 1490th, 1491th, 1492th, 1493th, 1494th, 1495th, 1496th, 1497th, 1498th, 1499th, 1500th, 1501th, 1502th, 1503th, 1504th, 1505th, 1506th, 1507th, 1508th, 1509th, 1510th, 1511th, 1512th, 1513th, 1514th, 1515th, 1516th, 1517th, 1518th, 1519th, 1520th, 1521th, 1522th, 1523th, 1524th, 1525th, 1526th, 1527th, 1528th, 1529th, 1530th, 1531th, 1532th, 1533th, 1534th, 1535th, 1536th, 1537th, 1538th, 1539th, 1540th, 1541th, 1542th, 1543th, 1544th, 1545th, 1546th, 1547th, 1548th, 1549th, 1550th, 1551th, 1552th, 1553th, 1554th, 1555th, 1556th, 1557th, 1558th, 1559th, 1559.88
So they go through an application like you do for any other facility here, the Parks and Recs? So they go through the Parks and Rec and they follow that process? Okay, when you, when you loan it out to any nonprofit?
To any nonprofit, yes.
So it's basically up to the city manager to decide if one of the facilities will be loaned out to anybody that fills out the application and so forth? Okay. Another question is, I've been visiting the Bowman quite frequently, only on a personal basis because some of my aunts live there. And also just to, you know, attend some events. Have any of the issues that have been pending regarding some of the complaints? And some of the people that I've talked to are sections eight. Have, do you know anything about that or has any of that been addressed? Or maybe you don't know any about, any complaints regarding that?
We covered, we went, covered this last meeting and I asked, I asked Mr. Bohorkis if there was anything else or any new, new concerns that we had or they had, to please let me know. So everything that we knew up until September, including a letter that was submitted to Mr. Bermeles, was taken care of and or addressed with Gorman Group back then. But I was not made aware of any new issues or concerns. But I ask if they do have them, to please let us know. Even within our section eight tenants, back then, we were hearing from them and now we're not. So I'm not sure if it's something that's still lingering from September, October, or if it's new issues or the same issues that really haven't changed. But yes, we need to know so we could have that communication with Gorman Group again and find out exactly what it is that's going on.
And, and just for the record, I got a copy of that letter, if that's the same letter you are referring to. And so what you're saying, what I am understanding, what you're saying is that when there is a complaint, especially because I guess it's section, if they are section eight, are you saying that they, do they know the residents to reach out to you?
Yes.
If, if, I know there's a chain of command or protocol followed, but do they know the protocol? Do, do the residents, section eight, and how do they know?
So when they go to their actual interview for section eight, for the voucher program, as part of their, their interview and orientation, they're, and not just Bowman, it would be anybody that has issues or, you know, especially with landlords as such, that they let us know what those issues are so we could address them or try to address them to the best of our abilities. Now, when this happened at Bowman, I happened to be there in person. And I introduced myself and I let them know, you know, that I could help them in any which way, which after that, I was having other tenants reach out to me, not necessarily section eight, but I helped them anyways.
And last question is, what responsibility does the city have in terms of the section eight residents?
It would be more of us representing HUD for an equal housing opportunity. So as representatives of HUD, we need to be able to see that they are, they are all given the equal opportunity to safe living, so.
And just last question, may I? So if, yeah, so if any of these residents are being represented by an attorney, does attorney usually contact you?
I have not been in that situation, but if they want to contact me, yes, by all means. And like I said, my, my due diligence at the time was to contact Gorman. And Gorman came, they even came down, we had a meeting here, so I'm not even sure if they know.
So they have complaint to directly?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, so, okay.
Yes, so.
I looked at the last meeting and I know Mr. Bohorkis and I think Mr. Benia has brought it up. So the protocol is to reach out to you and they have section eight to you?
Yes.
So.
And like I said, if we have any new concerns that need to be addressed, then by all means, please let me know so I could get ahold of Gorman admin and let them know of the existing.
And I, and mainly I was concerned that they know, but since you're saying that it is already written in their contract. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bohorkis.
I know that Commissioner Montiel mentioned that if the city responsible for the section eight tenants. I think the, the obligation, responsibility of the city is to look after all the elderly people in the community. That's one of our obligations to make sure that they, they are treated right and they have decent housing. And, and not only section eight tenants. Okay, so we have to look after all of our senior citizens in this community and make sure that they are not being harassed or, or making their lives uncomfortable. So I believe that the city should not only look after the section eight tenants, but also all the residents in that Bowman.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any future items for the agenda?
I do not, do you have any requests?
No, I think the only thing would be the, the target dates that you will email for us. And you know, what, and how about anything pending down, down the future? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Bermeus? Well said, I move to adjourn this meeting. Again, all all all, all in favor, there you go. All opposed? That's a new year, all opposed? I say, media adjourn.